2013 council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, with our God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on March 25, 2013, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll and approve of the minutes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees. For the Finance Committee, we had a meeting prior to council and we have our next meeting two weeks from today. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings to report on and no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Ms. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held and nothing to report.
Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned last meeting that we were probably going to have a Streets meeting in April to discuss the sidewalk issue. We're going to move that out now, probably towards the end of May. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a Water and Utilities meeting scheduled Tuesday, April 30, at 5:30 here at City Hall, downstairs in a multipurpose room. And we're going to discuss recommendations from the Utility Rate Review Committee and a couple other items on the agenda to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action. We have several items for the Finance Committee. We have 1371 crime and airport liability renewal for 2013 and '14, 1372 general liability insurance renewal for 2013 and '14, 1373 amending ordinance 3713 U.S. EPA Brownfield Grant, 1374 MCRC staffing pay scale addition, 1375 final resolution for ODOT-SR state route, 18 and 57 resurfacing, 1376 jet agreement with Lafayette Township, 1377 transfer request, 1378 budget amendments, 1379 memo of understanding with state road railroad dual crossing, 1381 IT contract with Medina City Schools, and 1382 sodium chloride rock salt purchase agreement. And for the Water and Utilities Committee, we have one item which is going to be discussed on an April 30 meeting. It's a 1380 utility rate review recommendation. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number of things this evening. The Everbridge Alert System is a countywide alert system that residents can sign up for. They can also select just the particular alerts that they're interested in, whether it be weather or amber alerts or all alerts. And if you go to the City of Medina website, www.madinaoh, there's a link there to go right to the Everbridge Alert System and sign up. The day of serving is scheduled. That's local churches and pastors are hosting another day of serving to kind of help those that can't do some of the yard work or cleanup or fix-ups on their own. The applications can be sent to Dawn Conwell at the mayor's office. Her email is dconwell@madinaoh.org, or you can call her by phone, 330-722-9020. They were trying to set a cutoff for it, but we've had a number of seniors still ask and we are able to accommodate them thus far. Just a reminder that supplies, all supplies for the projects need to be provided by the resident requesting the service and the labor will be provided by the churches. Automatic Clearinghouse, or ACH, customers can sign up for their utility bills to have the payment directly pulled from their bank account to avoid late fees and also avoid mailing charges. Application forms are available at the Finance window here at City Hall. Another option is online bill paying where customers can use a credit card and you can sign up for that. Again, there's a link on the front page of our website, which I previously mentioned. The National Day of Prayer events are Thursday, May 2. There's three events. One is breakfast at Williams on the Lake. It's the only event that there's a charge for. It's $15. Tickets are available at the mayor's office and many of the local churches. The event is from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 and the guest speaker is Reverend Cornell Carter from Second Baptist. There'll be a noon prayer service at Public Square. And in case of inclement weather, the United Church of Christ has agreed to permit people to come over there to get out of the weather. And then the evening service will be at the new Medina United Methodist Church on Foot Road. It starts at 7:00 p.m. and ends at 8:30. So same times as the morning, just in the evening. Then last but not least, I'd like to make a statement on the issues with the Medina City Schools. Recently, public comments have been made in emails and on blogs regarding the Medina City leaders, specifically myself and the council, needing to get involved in the issues concerning Medina Schools expenditures. The mayor and the city council have no authority or oversight of the school operations. This is entirely under the purview of the elected Medina City School District Board. I and Law Director Greg Huber have both spoken with Medina County Prosecutor Dean Holman regarding this matter. Mr. Holman's office is in the process of assessing the situation. We feel that Mr. Holman's office would have jurisdiction over this matter due to the city school district being in multiple jurisdictions and the amount of money involved and the fact that the fund in question is a county fund known as the Medina County Schools Educational Service Center Fund. It's also important to understand that the city and Mr. Holman can only review legal matters as opposed to ethical and moral issues. The City of Medina staff will meet and assist Mr. Holman in any way we can to bring this matter to an appropriate resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is the last meeting before income tax filings are due. All residents are required to file city income tax return. We have one more opportunity. If you would like assistance with those forms, it'll be on Saturday, April 13, at the Rec Center between 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the evening. That's at our Rec Center, again, on Waymouth Road, on Saturday, the 13th, from 9:00 to 4:00. That's the last chance to get free assistance. And we also have, here at City Hall, we have the forms available here. You can also print them off the Internet from CCA's site, or if you want to get a paper copy here, we have them here. And I hope to help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Bear Ducci, please, chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item. Spring cleanup time is here and we knew it happened because we're getting a sharp increase of complaints from residents, smoke and odor complaints from open burns. I'd like to remind all the residents to be good neighbors that open burning is not permitted within the city boundaries. It's including yard waste, branches, and any other type of trash. If they have any questions, please call the station and we'll give more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. One, I wanted to recap a program that we've had at the Rec Center now for over two years called Healthways. This is a program that has allowed over 1,300 eligible seniors, a free membership to our facility, and provides three different types of classes, which are also free for the seniors. The number for these programs grows daily, so if you'd like to see videos for this program, they are available on YouTube by going to www.youtube.com/cityofmadina, all one word. And then to verify for eligibility for the program, you can call the Rec Center at 330-721-6901, where our friendly front desk staff would be glad to assist you and it'll take less than a minute to find out if you're eligible. Look for the MRC's new spring/summer brochure in your Saturday, April 13 post. If you don't receive the post, the brochure will also be available online and at the Rec Center by Monday, April 15. Our next scheduled advisory board meeting is Thursday, May 16, at 7:30 at the Rec Center. This month's meeting has been canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. With warm weather approaching, I'd like to say a few things about the types of residential building permits we see with the change of seasons. Permit requests for fences, pools, and decks are starting to increase. A change in the code now exempts decks under 200 square feet and fewer than 30 inches above grade from permit requirements. While these decks will not now require a building permit, the city zoning regulations would still apply. Please contact us for details. The new 2013 residential code has presented many other changes and we can help you understand and comply with the new rules. Additionally, the electrical code, particularly regarding pools, is always a challenge to comply with. So if you are planning to install a pool, come and see us for a permit and we will assist you with compliance and safety there as well. I want to encourage homeowners who are contracting work to use registered contractors as required and if doing the work yourself, to come to the Medina City Building Department for information regarding code compliance, permits, and inspections. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hannan, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make note of our boards and commissions meetings for this week. Our regularly scheduled meetings will be on this Thursday, April 11. We have had some changes, however. Plan Commission will meet at 7:00 p.m. at their regular time. We do not have a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting scheduled for 6:00 p.m. as there's no agenda items. And our Historic Preservation Board meeting unfortunately has been moved. The Historic Preservation Board will meet on Monday, April 15, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few announcements with respect to Arbor Day. The parks, in conjunction with Kiwanis, is going to hold an Arbor Day tree podding day at 5:30 p.m. on Thursday, April 11, at the Reagan Park Service Garage. Usually takes about an hour to plant or pot about 700 saplings for the third graders. So if you're interested, you can come out for that. Arbor Day program will be at Williams on the Lake, Thursday, April 18. The mayor, council members, and shade tree members are invited to attend. Anyone else interested may attend, but there will be a $10 charge to eat. And then lastly, we're going to have a ceremonial Arbor Day tree planting will take place on the southeast corner of the square in celebration of National Arbor Day on April 26 at noon. Everyone from the community is invited to attend and help plant a tree. And any of the third graders, we'd like to invite them who win the Arbor Day competition from their schools to attend the planting on the square. Related to parks, we've seen many residents enjoying our parks this past week and this weekend in particular with the warm weather. We've also have interviewed and assembled our seasonal crew to meet the park use demand this year. And lastly, our youth sports fields are prepared and currently in use for practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to mention the service departments for their 2012 accomplishments. I want to recognize the sanitation department, street department, water department, and public buildings, as well as vehicle maintenance and the related clerical support for those departments as well. Year-end reports were due to the mayor in their office and I understand they'll be available for the public viewing on the website very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this afternoon, our Board of Control awarded the project for West Smith Road reconstruction to Febrezi Trucking and Paving for a little over $1.9 million. This will be our big summertime project. Take a couple of weeks to get the contract signed and finalized, but we expect construction to start sometime toward the end of the month. We will be notifying all of the adjacent property owners and other stakeholders of the time and date of the scheduled public open house to discuss the project. Secondly, I want to announce we're preparing to start the parking lot improvement project. The bulk of the work will happen in the parking lot here just off the square on the north side of West Liberty. It's the lot between Sully's and Theater. Starting next Monday, April 15, and lasting for approximately a week, we will have to close the interior parking lot spaces. There's 20 spaces altogether. These are the spaces that abut the center concrete island. That's where most of the work's going to happen. Unfortunately, the spaces aren't going to be available for that week. We will be posting signs here this week notifying those users of that coming project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have confirmation of mayor's appointment. We have the Archive Commission, Larue Brown, expiring 12/31/15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Notices, communications, and petitions. We have won a liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D5 permit to LM-D65 LLC. Doing business as Captain Tony is at 9:30 West Liberty Street.
Move not to object.
Second.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Erica.
Thank you, Mr. President. Erica Graffin, representing the Auditor's Office. I have a few reminders tonight. The state mandated reappraisal is coming to an end and will be mailing out the new values mid to late summer and we will start the informal hearings late summer into fall. And those are the values that we will pay on for calendar year 14. Family Affairs coming up. That will be April 27 from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Medina County Fairgrounds. A great place to take kids. It's also time for the Memorial Day Essay Contest, which is a partnership between the Auditor's Office and the Wadsworth Veterans of Foreign Affairs, foreign wars, I'm sorry. The essays must be submitted by May 10 and entries can be mailed to the office or emailed to auditor@madinacountyauditor.org. And lastly, the Regional Pet Adopt-a-Thon will be held Saturday, May 4. That's at the National Guard Armory at 9:20 Lafayette Road, and that is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 59-13, a resolution adopting the Housing Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement between the State of Ohio Department of Development and the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The Emergencies Clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the Emergency Clause?
Discussion on the Emergency Clause and the resolution. Mr. Hannan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This agreement is relative to our CHIP program and details how potential program income from our housing and micro enterprise programs can be utilized. The existing three-year agreement has expired, thus the Emergency Clause has been requested. And I apologize, I did not represent this at Finance Committee and I haven't had a chance to confirm if Mr. Huber has reviewed and received this yet, so I would request that it be subject to Law Director's approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Have you had an opportunity to review this yet, or do you need time to?
Going to need a little time.
Okay, so the resolution was subject to the Law Director's approval and I assume that the second was also?
Correct.
Any further discussion or comment on the Emergency Clause? Clerk, please call the roll on the Emergency Clause.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And with respect to the resolution, again, it's subject to the Law Director's review and approval. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on a resolution?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Resolution 59-13 passes 7-0, subject to Law Director's approval.
Thank you. Ordinance 60-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contractor to successful bidder for the 2013 concrete street repair program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our annual program of concrete street repair. This is the program where we replace individual blocks of pavement throughout the city. This year, we're asking for $500,000, which I believe is the most we've ever asked for previously.
Thank you. And from previous years, especially last year, I think the street repair was a phenomenal success to certain parts of the city. It was done quickly and the job is still holding up after the winter, which is always a good news. Does anybody else have any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 60-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 61-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contractor to successful bidder for the 2013 concrete pavement joint ceiling program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This also is an annual program. This concrete pavement joint ceiling is an effort to maintain our pavements. It preserves them and should extend the life of those pavements.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 61-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 62-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Arcatus for engineering design services for the South Court Elevated Tank Interior Coating.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. As the name suggests, this is asking council's authorization to have Arcatus do the design services for our South Court tank. The interior coating needs to be replaced. The project itself is not that complicated. The complicated part is actually taking the tank out of service for a number of weeks. Arcatus will be putting that program together for us.
Thank you. My understanding is by taking the tank out of service does not mean that people will still not have water because it'll just be operated through the pumps.
That's correct.
Any further discussion or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 62-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 63-13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cunningham and Associates, Inc., to provide engineering design services for the Wildwood Beachwood Drainage Improvement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. This project is being completed to resolve a longstanding drainage issue in the Forest Meadows neighborhood. Over the course of the last 20, 25 years, we've had numerous floodings of various houses over there. This project will improve the drainage, both surface drainage, rear drainage, as well as drainage for the street, to resolve that flooding issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 63-13 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 64-13, an ordinance amending ordinance number 46-13, passed March 25, 2013, amending section 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code relative to the police department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The Emergencies Clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the Emergency Clause.
Any discussion on the Emergency Clause or the ordinance? Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Originally, well, what this ordinance does is reduces the lieutenants in our police department from two to one. Lieutenant Starch originally submitted his request for resignation effective May 1, 2013, but then upon further analysis and checking with the pension board, it was advantageous to him to not enter into the month of May and retire at the end of April, April 30, 2013. So we're asking to amend the original ordinance to change the effective date to April 30, 2013, and the Emergency Clause is necessary because we don't have 30 days between now and then to have it make effect.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the Emergency Clause?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion on the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 64-13 passes 7:0.
Ordinance 65-13, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Arthur J. Gallagher and Company for the City of Medina's crime policy and the Medina Municipal Airport Liability Insurance for the period of April 1st, 2013 through April 1st, 2014.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Further discussion? Mr. Huber?
The City of Medina received the best quote for airport liability insurance and the Medina criminal policy from Arthur J. Gallagher and Company. The ordinance needs to take effect April 1st, 2013, which is why the emergency clause has been requested. And in the next ordinance, the city received the best bid for general liability coverage from Wells Fargo, and once again, the coverage needs to be effective April 1st.
Seems like we're getting some tower interference there, but, and Morris Code or something we were talking about. But we appreciate that, and appreciate your efforts in that. Is any further discussion on the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 65-13 passes 7:0.
Ordinance 66-13, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Wells Fargo Insurance Services of Ohio, LLC, for the city's property casualty and general liability insurance for the period of April 1st, 2013 through April 1st, 2014.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Any discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? This, again, is just the annual update for the entire city, of course, property casualty and general liability coverage. And I believe the premium was $113,000, thereabouts, to cover this for the year's period for the city, and it covers around $38 million of coverage for all the buildings and structures within the city. Is there any further, again, the emergency clause is because of April 1st date. Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.